I'd like to call to order this meeting of the School Board of Independent School District 624, and we're going to start this evening with the oath of office for our new board members. Dr. Kasmatzek.
All right, thank you. Chair Ellison, so new board member, and then re-elected board members, he'll come out front. And I'm going to move to the podium. We'll do the oath of office. I'll read this. I won't go too fast. Okay, ready? So, I'll say a sentence and then you repeat after me and we'll move forward. So, I affirm that I will support
I affirm that I will support
the Constitution of the United States and of this state.
The Constitution of the United States and of this state.
And that I will discharge faithfully
That I will discharge faithfully.
the duties of the office of school board member
The duties of the office of school board member.
of Independent School District Number 624
Independent School District 624.
to the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
That's it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And with that, I would ask the clerk, Acting Clerk, to please call the roll.
Daniels here. Ellison?
Here.
Scar?
Here.
Strife Oji?
Here.
Thompson?
Here.
Arcand?
Here.
I didn't hear it.
Beloit?
Here.
I heard Arcand.
And we are all here. And I would ask everyone to please stand for the Pledge of Elegance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have before us an agenda. I would ask for a motion to approve.
So moved.
A motion by Ms. Thompson and a second, second by Ms. Beloit. Any discussion? All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. And we have an agenda. Next, we move into the reorganization of the board. Nominations are now in order for school board offices.
I nominate Arcand for chair, Thompson for vice chair, Daniels for clerk, and Beloit for treasurer.
Arcand has been nominated for chair. Do you accept the nomination?
Yes.
Thompson has been nominated for vice chair. Do you accept the nomination?
Yes.
Daniels has been nominated for clerk. Do you accept the nomination?
Yes.
Beloit has been nominated for treasurer. Do you accept the nomination?
Yes.
Are there any further nominations for the school board offices? Are there any further nominations for the school board offices? If there are no further nominations for the school board offices, that is now closed. Arcand has been elected chair, Thompson has been elected vice chair, Daniels has been elected clerk, and Beloit has been elected treasurer by acclamation. Thank you, and the gavel is yours, sir.
Thank you. I just want to thank Chair Ellison for all that you've done and led us these times. You know, you've been a great leader during some tough times, and we want to appreciate it. I also want to, I want to thank the Ms. Thompson, the vice chair, because she's going to be very important for me. And then I also know that Ms. Daniels and Ms. Beloit are going to be very helpful as we move forward, the information they bring. And then everybody else, I know that you're going to keep me in line and make sure that I follow, so that's always helpful. One of my goals as I move forward, I want to make sure that voices get heard and people get to talk and we have a clear understanding when we make our decisions. So, thank you, everybody. So, we're going to move on to our consent agenda. And in our consent agenda today, we have a lot of people who have donated to our district. We cannot run all these programs. We have a lot of good people who give different amounts of funding to our district to allow us to do things. That's very special to us, and we thank them very much for all the money that they donate. If you look in there, quite a bit of funding was donated this last month. So, thank you to all those who donated. Can I get a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So moved.
Beloit, a second?
Second.
And Thompson with a second. This will be a roll call vote, so I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Daniels, aye. Ellison?
Aye.
Scar?
Since I was not, I was going to ask for a point of order, but since I wasn't, this didn't happen on my watch, so can I just abstain from a vote?
You can.
Um, where am I here? Okay, Strife Oji?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
Arcand?
Aye.
Beloit?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. The next item on our agenda is public forum. It's now time for that. We have zero requests. Just a reminder that during public forum, it allows members of the community and others three minutes to speak, with the understanding that the speaker of this will actually talk to the school board. And we don't need to go, but there's real, you'll get cards that tell you at 1 minute 30 seconds, and then we'll gather when it's done. So, in the future, if you want to speak, make sure you sign up, and then we'll take you to the public forum. That leads us right to now to item number C1, overview, and welcome to White Bear and update registration.
Thank you, Chair Arcand and members of the school board, Dr. Kay and our student liaison as well. Every year in January, we offer an opportunity for families and community members to come into our schools and check out all of the great things that are happening in White Bear. We call it Welcome to White Bear. And so, I'll just give you a brief overview on behalf of the schools and the principals of the different things that are happening at the different levels. So, we will start with elementary. As you can see, we've got a full page of information available for elementary incoming kindergarten families. Our registration process did open in December, and it will continue to be open, of course, as well. But getting people enrolled early is a terrific way to get them involved in the school right away and helps with the planning for next year as well. And so, the Welcome to White Bear activities that we have offer to families who are looking for a tour can reach out to any of the schools and really schedule a tour that works on their timeline. And then we did also have tours available or an open house available at two of our schools this year in January 8th and 9th, and that was at two locations that are offering a Spanish immersion, a dual immersion program starting for this fall. So, we'll talk about that a little bit later as well. But that was one time where we invited groups of people in for tours as well. And so, as we went along doing what we do to let people know that registration is open, we sent out packets of information to our incoming kindergarten families, and they had an elementary guide. They had an experiences guide that I know the board members who have been here before know what this is. But it was developed in conjunction with our early childhood program, and we offer that in Spanish, Mong, and English to all of our families. And that's just, not necessarily a to-do list, but just an idea of some experiences that are good for students to learn and be working on as they're preparing for kindergarten. And then, as enrollments are officially accepted, our principals, our schools sent out, send out notes welcoming people to, into the fold, and then students do get the "I'm a Bear" t-shirt as well when they're, when they are officially enrolled. And I know that you can see those shirts out and about throughout, throughout the community in these days and beyond. It's always really fun to see those pop up either in photos or in what I'm seeing around me. So, some of the other things that we added into the mix for this year was a billboard that we have up on 35E. We have had people say, you know, like, the way that we do it is great, but can we add some new ways in? And other districts are doing things similar as well. So, we have done that, added that this year. We added another, sort of a reminder to families, that incoming kindergarten family list. And you can see there, do you have 15 minutes? Just sort of a reminder of, remember that packet we sent you? It looks overwhelming. Really, it takes 15 minutes. Do you have that? Please let us know that your child is coming to us in the fall. And then, the other two things that are up there are a kindergarten principal video that we pulled together, or elementary principal video we pulled together to welcome incoming kindergarteners, and then our elementary experiences video as well. And both are available on our website. So, as I mentioned, I would come back to talk a little bit about an immersion program that we started, that started talking or marketing this year, and it will be for incoming kindergarteners who will be starting in the fall of 2025. So, in order to just get that rolling, we did host a parent information session earlier in the school year, just to let people know what was happening and what we were, what we were planning, get input from them as well on what would really be important to them as we're building the program. We pulled together a video to tell people about that, a flyer, and then open houses, the ones that we mentioned before. And so, those happened. Just recently, families were able to come in, get information, meet the teachers, see the buildings, and then register right then and there as they were wanting to do so. So, we did have extra family outreach with that, of course, to both English-speaking families and Spanish-speaking families as well. All right, on to middle school. Our incoming kindergarteners did have family information nights, and then the registration window is open currently, and it will be closing this Friday. So, they, they got the lay of the land. They, the current fifth graders got to learn all about what will be happening for them when they start middle school next year. And then, of course, the registration window is open for our seventh and eighth grade students as well. And so, the way that they got to learn about everything, obviously, was the in-person meetings, but then their, the registration guide is available online, offering them information about the classes and what they need to take, what they get to take. And all of it is, is a really fun, just packaging it into their registration guide. And then, the video thumbnail up there as well is the middle school experiences video as well. All right, and on to high school again, parent information sessions. The huge or big difference for this year, of course, was that there weren't two separate meetings at North and at South. It was combined at the new White Bear Lake Area High School, obviously, ninth through 12th graders, where their incoming ninth through incoming 12th graders were able to get together at that one building and, and really get excited about starting that next chapter, whether it's chapter to the new building or it's a chapter into the next year of school. Something that is really fun, and I'm excited to see this happen, their course guide went online. And so, okay, perfect. I'm glad. I see a thumbs up. Okay, perfect. It's searchable and sortable, and so, the students can kind of play around and check out what they want, not flipping through pages, but flipping through information on the website. And so, I think, good, thank you for the nods, that that will be something that will be really helpful for students and for families as they move forward. And then again, the, the high school experiences video. And I know I'm kind of glossing over that, but they are really fun to watch, and it kind of goes through, here are all of the classes, here are all of the activities. And it's a really fun way, a student voice, you know, sort of telling you all about what is happening at White Bear Lake Area High School. Not to be forgotten, would be our early childhood program. Their registration events are happening later on, but they definitely are happening. The preschool, as you can see, the information will be made available later this, later this month. And then, on the 13th of February, the registration window will open for our preschool programs that are happening throughout the district as well. And so, with that, I'll just end with a "Go Bears." But if there are any questions and anybody has any
Do we have any questions?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Ms. Ellison.
Just a comment. I just want to follow up, Ms. Vetti. It was so much easier to find courses, to help my kids find courses than it has been in the past. We were able to sort by, okay, you're going into 10th grade, what are the classes you can take by department? So, hats off. It made, it made our life a whole lot easier, and I hope it did for other parents, too. So, thank you.
Good. I'll make sure to let the high school team know and the counseling team know. Thank you.
Any further questions?
Want to comment on that also? I also appreciated that. It is a lot easier with my 10th grader looking at junior year and figuring all those pieces out. And then, we did go to the informational night, even though I have, I wanted to bring her with me so we could do it together. And then, you know, she got to talk to some staff members and really look into some of the things she's thinking about for PSO classes or college and the school classes. So, it was nice to have that event also, to just go and do those things. And then, I was very excited to see the first immersion kindergarten teacher in our human resource part of our packet, and I just wanted to highlight that. It's exciting. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Thank you very much for the report. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, that leads us now to information item C2, superintendent's report. Dr. Kasmatzek. All right, thank you, Chair Arcand, members of the board. The 43rd Annual Jazz Nightclub Event is taking place on Saturday, January 25th, in the High School Student Union. Tickets are available through January 19th on the Activities website under the Ticketing Passes tab. There's always a terrific, this is always a terrific night to enjoy live music while supporting our students. The recent snow and cold weather is a reminder to once again invite the community to use the High School Fieldhouse Walking Track, which is open from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. Monday through Thursday. There's no cost, and we ask those who participate to wear clean, dry shoes. And now that we are well into winter, it is important to remember that the emergency school closing information, in case there is a need for it. If winter weather is so severe that schools need to close, start late, or dismiss early, the news will be shared through local media outlets, and district families will be alerted through a parent square phone message and email. And those who have opted in to receive text messages will be alerted in that way as well. The message will be posted on the district homepage. Messages will be posted on the district's Facebook and Twitter pages. Construction at Sunrise Park is making steady progress. Over the next couple of weeks, district center offices will be moving to the completed district service center portion of Sunrise. Next week, both buildings will have staffed welcome centers. And then, starting the week of January 27th, the welcome center, including the enrollment office, will be exclusively housed at Sunrise. The March 3 regular school board meeting is tentatively scheduled to be the first board meeting to take place in the new boardroom at Sunrise. And knowing that the Vikings game is on, so many minds this evening, I'll end my report by showing a video of our high school students and staff members who gathered in the union this morning to take part before school in a school-wide school chant. So, enjoy. And Rachel told me before the meeting, we had about over 4,000 views so far, so spreading fast. So, that's my report. Thanks. Do you have any questions? Dr. Kasmatzek, I have a question. If I go over to the track and I wear my outside shoes, where do we put them when we go in? So, I put my dry shoes on. Is there a spot there to put my shoes somewhere? Yes. In the, like, yeah, in the entryway or in the, yeah, in the, in the commons area, and between the gym and the fieldhouse, there's an area. Yep. Right. Sounds, I'll have to get over there and do some marking. Thank you. All right, we do have, we have no discussion items for tonight, so we're going to go right to the operational items. Many of these items we're going to do tonight is basically setting up the procedures we're going to use over the next year to run our board meetings. And so, we're going to go through them one by one and approve them. The first operational item on the, on the docket is E1, and E1 is going to talk about how we operate as a board. And so, if you saw the rules of order in our packet, do you, do anybody that wants to make a motion to accept this rules of order?
So moved.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Daniels. All right, now we can open it for discussion. If you have any questions or discussion about the rules of order? I'll give you a second if you hadn't had a chance to look at it. Okay, this will be a voice vote. So, all in favor of accepting the school board operating procedures, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. The second item on our agenda is E2, and that is the compensation for board members. And that's in the packet. I believe it's the same compensation as last year. It is, yep. Yeah. So, do we have a motion to accept the compensation package?
So moved.
Beloit, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Daniels. It's discussion.
Thompson.
It's Thompson, I'm sorry. Any discussion? That's why you're here to keep me in order. Yes.
Can I just make a clarifying comment? That this is an annual compensation.
It's not monthly.
Yeah, it's not monthly. It's, this is definitely annual.
Any further questions? Okay, I believe this will be because it's money. Will be a roll call vote. I'll ask this to call the roll.
Daniels, aye. Ellison?
Aye.
Scar?
Aye.
Strife Oji?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
Arcand?
Aye.
Beloit?
Aye.
Motion carries. The next operational item is E3. And E3 is the, the appointment of the Intermediate School District 916 representative. And it looks like, again this year, Kathleen Daniels will serve as the Intermediate School District 916 board. Can I get a motion to accept the proposal?
So moved.
Okay. Beloit, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Daniels. Any discussion?
I, I just have a comment.
Yeah.
It's been an honor to serve on the 916 board. They have been good partners to us, and we look forward to continuing that partnership into the future. So, they've been a wonderful resource for our district.
Yes, Mr. Scar.
Could you explain the, what the purpose of that is? I just don't have any background.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask Ms. Daniels, because she's been on it.
So, Northeast 916 district is a intermediate district, so it serves 13 metro, northeast metro districts. And each of those districts then have a board member to serve on their board. So, I would represent White Bear Lake on their school board. So, I attend their meetings. I go to their, I've taken many tours. We have some retreats. It's similar to this board in that we talk about budget, we talk about policy, very similar kinds of things.
Kathleen, could you mention some of the programs they offer?
Yes, they have the Setting For programs for special education, which are separate programs in separate buildings for kids that need lots, lots of support. And those children are placed there by IAP teams, which are, include parents and school staff. And they also have all of our trade programs that we have lots of our, our high school students in. And so, those are the two main kinds of things they do. And they also offer a lot of consultation to our district. So, we might have some students that we just need support in figuring out the best program and how to serve them in our district without transferring them to the 916 program. So, they'll serve as consultation and training for our GPs.
Thank you. That's helpful. Does the funding come from us, or does it come from the state?
Both.
Okay. And then, do they put any mandates that we're required to follow?
No, they follow the MDE mandates.
So, it's more of a consultation and help, helpful relationship?
Right, right, right.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, go ahead, Ms.
Just a comment that I, I did not know this, but I feel that it is an important thing to know, that this is also the member who represents this district, because it is another school board. They also have a stipend that they receive for being on this board.
It's, it's very similar. I think, I think it's very similar to ours, maybe a little less. Yeah, that's true. I was just going to mention something before you said that, and I just lost my train of thought. Maybe I'll come up with it later. Thank you.
Any other questions? Before us then, we have a, we have a motion to have Ms. Daniels be the representative on our 916 board. This is a voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next on our agenda will be E4, and that is the action on the regular and work session meeting schedule for 2025-26. And what that means for us is we, we hold our regular school board meetings on the second Monday of the month, and our work sessions on the fourth Monday of the month, except during the months of June and July and December, when there's no work session. The March 2025-26 regular board meeting will be held on the first Monday of the month due to spring break. And May 2025 and 26, the work session will be held on the third Monday of the month due to Memorial Day. So, these are the actions that, when we're going to run our board meetings. Can I get a motion to accept the, can I get a motion to accept the, can I get a, yeah?
So moved.
Yes, thank you. Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? I believe this is also a voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. The next thing we have is E5, and that is to approve action on the official publication of the school district. We are very fortunate that in White Bear Lake, we have a newspaper that can, represents many of our districts outside the metro, or even in, no longer have a publication. So, we're very fortunate that we do. So, what we do is, in the, in the past years, we put legal notices and minutes have been published in the White Bear Press, and then, the full minutes are available at the district's website. So, the proposal has been submitted that, by the White Bear Press. The name will be the White Bear Press as the official school district and legal publication. The White Bear Press will increase from 2295 per column inch at a seven-point type to a nine-line at 2410. And this, this discount rate for the Van Ness Heights Press and the Citizen for the second insert will increase to 1391 per year and 1461. Our recommendation based below is our review of the Minnesota statute pertaining to the requirements of the school district newspapers. So, can we get a nominee, can we get a motion to accept approval for the White Bear Press, the press publications, White Bear Lake Schools?
So moved.
So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? I know I stumbled over that, but they will be who we do our publications through. Any other questions? Okay, this, once again, I believe will be a voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Now, we have, is we have E6, and that will be the action on compliance officers, officer. And basically, what this is, that each of, what we have is we have somebody that's appointed to work on our behalf with the Department of Minnesota, Minnesota Department of Education. Some of our policies state that a legal, legal responsibility of receiving complaints is assigned to this person. And I believe the people we have on here will be our department, our district human rights officer, Matthew Mons, our district ADA 504 coordinator, Lisa Orin, and then, our Title IX will be Dr. Gillespie. Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right. So, can we get a nomination to approve the appointment of Matthew Mons, Dr. Gillespie, and Lisa Orin?
So moved.
Okay, Beloit's first, and then?
Second.
Second by Ellison. Any further discussion? Hearing none. This also should be a voice vote. So, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We're just whipping right along here. Next on is, I think, C7. It's the approval on action on the local education agency authorization. So, what this is, the School Board of White Bear Lake Area Schools authorizes a superintendent as our local education agency, LEA, represents for the purposes of reviewing and approving documents required for compliance to federal programs, which include, are included in the Elementary and Secondary Education Act. The representative will ensure the school district will maintain compliance with the appropriate federal status, status regulations and procedures. Authorized to, we'd like to recommend authorizing Dr. Wayne Kasmatzek, superintendent, as our local education agent. He'll be resuming for the purposes of reviewing, approving documents required for the compliance to these programs in Elementary and Secondary Education Act for, for just the year of 2025. Can I get a motion to accept this?
So moved.
Chris Strife Oji, can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Daniels. Any discussion? Hearing none. This should also be a voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next on our agenda, it should be E9. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next on our agenda, it should be E9, and this motion is to approve the official depositories for the school district funds and authorized bank accounts and signatures. That's Tim Wald?
Yes. We, Tim, go ahead, but can we step, go back to E8? Yeah.
I skipped one? Okay, sorry.
Okay. Action on designation of legal counsel.
Sorry. All right, so put it in hold. We'll be right back.
I'll wait.
We'll be on E8, and that is the designation of legal counsel. So, for that, I gotta get it back over.
I can jump in, Scott.
Okay, go ahead. I want you for this to go.
So, these are, again, an annual recommended action is to approve Knutson, Flynn, and Deans, Ratwick, Rosak, Maloney, and then Squires, Walzberger, and Mace, and others as needed as our legal counsel for the calendar year 2025. And these have remained the same for many years. That's the recommended action.
Okay. So, we've stated the recommended action. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Ms. Beloit, can I get a second?
Second.
And Ms. Ellison. So, the motion in front is to accept the counsel designated Knutson, Flynn, and Deans P.A., and Ratwick, Roswick, and Maloney P.A., and the others. Any discussion? I'm not going to go through them all. Any discussion?
Does the board or does the staff do like a performance evaluation of the firm every year? Is that discussed in like executive session or something?
We haven't done an evaluation of our legal counsel.
Okay.
So, that may be something if we want to bring up later.
Sure.
I mean, as we get into it, we can, as.
Yeah, we can talk about it at a work session or something. We don't have to draw it out here.
Yes, Ms. Beloit.
Has there been any reason why we'd be dissatisfied with them as our legal counsel to this point?
No. Not from our perspective, and we work with them. No.
Okay, any other questions? This is also a voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. Motion carries. Now, Mr. Wald, we're on to yours. Sorry. This would be Operation Item E9, the depositories.
Thank you Chair Arcand, members of the board, Dr. Kasmaczek. Each year, the board approves the list of institution and accounts, as well as authorizes the individuals who can sign on those accounts and electronically transfer funds from the approved accounts. The list of accounts and authorized signers is included in the cover letter for this agenda item. We last updated this in July, when we had a resignation in the finance department, and it's not uncommon for us to bring this back during the year, should we have some change in staff. So, the recommended action is for the board to approve the list of official depositories for school district funds and authorized bank accounts and signatures for 2025.
We've heard the motion. Can I get a?
So moved.
Ms. Thompson, and a second?
Second.
Second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. This will be a voice vote also. All in favor?
The roll.
Oh, roll call vote. Sorry, thank you. That's why you're there. All right, I'm going to, I have to go back and forth. All right, I'm going to ask for you to call the roll.
Daniels, aye. Ellison?
Aye.
Scar?
Aye.
Strife Oji?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
Arcand?
Aye.
Beloit?
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries. Next, I believe, around to E10. It's the annual authorization allowing administration to contract for budgeted items. Mr. Wald?
Thank you Chair Arcand. Annually, the board authorizes administration to contract for budgeted items consistent with State Statute 123B.52 subdivision 2, which states the board may authorize its superintendent or business manager to lease, purchase, and contract for goods and services within the budget as approved by the board, end quote. In our case, the business manager is the assistant superintendent for finance and operations. The board's delegation of authority under this provision applies so long as the estimated amount of transaction does not exceed $175,000. In those instances, the board must explicitly authorize the transaction. The board renews this authority to enter into contracts at its annual organization meeting each January. The recommendation is for the board to confirm, confirm the school board's understanding that the superintendent and the assistant superintendent for finance and operations have been duly authorized to lease, purchase, and contract for goods and services within the budget as approved by the board in the amounts up to $175,000, and restatement of authorization for the same pursuant to Minnesota Statute, Section 123B.52 subdivision 2.
So, we've heard the recommended action. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Who was it? Daniels? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Strife Oji. Any discussion? Yes.
Does the statute specifically state $175,000?
Yeah, Minnesota statute states.
And that's the max?
Yes.
Okay. And is, has that increased this year?
No, that stayed the same.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Okay, I've got this. This will be a roll call vote. I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Daniels, aye. Ellison?
Aye.
Scar?
Aye.
Strife Oji?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
Arcand?
Aye.
Beloit?
Aye.
Okay, that motion carries. Now, we're on to Action Item E11, annual, action on the annual resolution to increase micro purchase threshold.
Yeah, State Chair Arcand and members of the board, state and federal law set different limits for purchasing when it comes to contracts and bidding. Federal law allows school districts to set their own limits, as long as the school board approves it annually. By granting this flexibility, allows school districts to align state and federal purchasing limits. Tonight, we're asking the board to approve the annual resolution aligning the federal threshold for micro purchases of $10,000 to $250,000 to the state threshold of $25,000 to $175,000. And included in the board memo are the thresholds for both state and federal are identified.
Okay, we've had the, heard the action. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Ellison, second?
Second.
Thompson. Questions?
And I would just note, the board is approving a resolution tonight for this.
I just have one question. I'm a little bit familiar with FARs. Are we subject, is the school district subject to FARs, federal acquisition regulations? Is it only for federal funding?
I don't know the answer to that. Andy, do you know the answer to that?
It's okay. We can figure it out later. I mean, it's just, it's just a detail. I was just curious, because you mentioned FARs in the documentation.
Any further questions? Okay, in front of us, we have the action to approve the annual resolution to increase micro purchase threshold. And I believe this is a roll call vote. Clerk can call the roll.
Daniels, aye. Ellison?
Aye.
Scar?
Aye.
Strife Oji?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
Arcand?
Aye.
Beloit?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you. The motion carries. Okay, the next one on the list is E12, and that is to action on the school board policies 501 and 526. We normally take these in a group action and bring them forward. These have come to the, to the work study, and we looked at them, and now I believe they're coming back for final approval. And that would be policy 501 and policy 526. Do we have a motion to accept those two policies?
So moved.
Daniels, second? Thompson, sorry, Thompson, second?
Second.
Ellison? Okay, so in front of us, we have the motion to approve this school board policies 501, 526. Do we have questions? Hearing none. This will be a voice vote. So, all in favor of accepting the policies 501 and 526, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We are now down to Board Item F, the Board Forum. This is an opportunity for our board members to give information out of things that are going on and with them and the community, or their positions. Does anybody have anything to share? Go ahead, Ms. Beloit.
So, White Bear Lake hosted its very first archery tournament. There were over 400 archers. Got lots of really, really good feedback from everybody coming in on how great the building looks. And so, it was great that we can finally hold the event, because it's been a couple, quite a few years that we have to travel either north or south. And we don't have a field house, but now we have the field house. And it was a really good tournament, and everybody did a really good job.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Ms. Thompson?
I just wanted to say one thing, since we were all sworn in tonight. And I just wanted to thank the community for their overwhelming support of my election campaign this past election. And I'm honored to serve our community, and I look forward to continuing to work together to ensure our students have access to an education that is truly inclusive and accessible to all. And I also look forward to working with our staff to ensure that we continue to work, build a district that we can all be proud of. So, thank you, and go Bears.
Anybody else? Yes.
I just remembered what I was going to say.
Okay.
About 916. Another thing that we do, they have a collective buying contract with vendors. And so, sometimes we participate in that, so we can get some of our supplies and things like that at a cheaper rate, because we pair with other districts.
Oh, so it's like a group purchasing organization?
Exactly. And then also, sometimes if we need a very small FDE of a teacher, or a therapist, or a nurse, say we have an increase in an area of special education or other things, we can contract a teacher for that, too. But it'd be hard to find teachers, like physical therapists, or nurses, or special education teachers. Things like that, that we, so it's a really, like I say, it's a very valuable partnership for us. So, I just wanted to, I was going to add just a couple more things.
Sure.
And I would encourage you, too, or any board members, to take a tour of many of their programs. And I offer them all spring, so I'll let you know when those tours are coming. So, it'd be great.
Thank you.
Well, thanks. I'd just like to thank the staff for easing myself in as a new board member here. They've been great. So, Wayne, your staff's been great. You've been very accommodating and informative. I really appreciate that. So, and also Jessica, reaching out to me and kind of meeting and talking about things was very helpful to me. So, I appreciate it. Look forward to improving this school district, as well as everyone else on the board, in terms of academic, getting our enrollment numbers up, and just overall being, you know, a top quartile school district in the state, but also in the country. So, thank you.
You. Anything else?
One more thing. I just also want to thank Jessica for her years of service as a great, you've been a great chairperson, and we've really benefited from your leadership. So, thank you.
I just want to officially welcome Mr. Scar. We're excited that you're here. We look forward to working with you and getting your viewpoints on things. So, we thank you for running and getting elected and being part of the board, because all of us up here know all the time you have to put in and all the work that's going to be ahead of us. So, we appreciate you and thank you.
Right, thank you. It's been a wild ride. And also, we should disclose that potentially we're related, but we're not sure.
Many, many, Dom, like.
Related to everybody in the district.
When you, when you're in this community for 150 years, you're related to everybody somehow. So, thank you on that. Any other things for forum? Otherwise, I'm going, we're on to our adjournment. Does anyone move for the adjournment?
Aye, Mr. Chair. Motion to adjourn.
We have a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carries. We can go.